Member Volani, Mayor Dean.
Here. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Henan. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Julie?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The agenda has been approved. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've come to our first public comments portion of the meeting where you may present your thoughts on items that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. This is not a back and forth. This is your opportunity to let us know what's on your mind and in your heart. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, there's a table just outside these doors with a sheet on it. You can sign your name and leave your contact information, and someone will get back with you. Please direct your comments to the Chair. Please refrain from cheering, booing, clapping, or speaking out of turn. You may speak on an agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Charles Terrell from Berkeley. I'd like to take you back to May 15th, Resolution R. 1223. Section 4 specifically. It talks of commercial accounts or industrial businesses will be billed for said services, which is solid waste removal and disposal, weekly fee of $41.05, so grand total for a year of over $2,100. Businesses in the last couple of weeks received a letter from the city, not under anybody in particular's signature. Nobody really signed it, just "Thank you, City of Berkeley." Talks of a two-yard reed load dumpster as a maximum for that $41.05. If you need additional pickups or have a dumpster larger, you need to contact an independent hauler of your choosing and arrange pickup. The commercial trash rate will still apply. So even if they do not use Tringali, so the city is now the sales agent for Tringali, to pick up their less than, their two yards or less per week, they still pay the $2,100 a year. That is a tax. That is not something that you, a fee that you just tack onto a water bill and send these people. It is a tax. It was not voted upon by we the people to put such a tax in place. I'm aghast that this even happened. The fact that I went back and watched the video a couple of times, the city attorney, the city manager, neither one objected to it, and saying, "This is a tax. You can't do this without a vote." I ask you, if not tonight, when will you take this onerous tax off of our businesspeople? And for most of the businesses, or at least the ones that I've talked to that I've listened to, two yards is nothing. One business owner has an eight-yard dumpster that's dumped three to four times a week. Another has two 10-yards. Each of those are dumped at least twice a week. So two yards is nothing. And the rate of 40, $41.05 a week is outrageously high for two yards. So what's it going to take to take this tax off of the rolls and not bill our commercial businesses in Berkeley?
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten, are you minding the timer?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Come up to the microphone. State your name and city of residence.
Hello, I am Gail Sikolsky. I live in Berkeley, and I was disappointed that the millage didn't go through for our chipper services. And I'm hoping that we can schedule another millage with wording that's more clear so that we can all vote to approve the millage, so we can get our chipper services back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Greg DuRoz for the record. Live on Bacon, 3795 Bacon. I'm here today because the more I learn about Berkeley finances, the less I like what I see. And I just felt I needed to come and share some of this with you. Historically, the year-end numbers are all over the place. I went back and I looked at the last couple of years, this year, next year, got five years here. Of the numbers I have here, ranging from a deficit or a reduction in the general fund in 2021 fiscal year, 1.3 million, $1,350,000. That's the highest. But then there's 397, there's a projected 1.3, $1,300,000 reduction for this fiscal year. Next year, we have a whopping $50,000 surplus projected, and the betting average would suggest that's not going to last long. And then in 2425 fiscal year, we're back to $700,000 projected deficit. Nice versus necessary. Berkeley needs to stop spending money for things that are not necessary. I don't know how else to say it. At a budget meeting in May of '22, not this year, but a year ago, you were making difficult decisions to cut $1,250,000. You were hearing about future revenue shortfalls. You were already considering the need for a headly millage override vote. And yet, at that very same meeting, you entertained a proposal for $100,000 for EV charging stations, and you proceeded with plans for new playground equipment with an initial estimated cost of $380,000. That did include some grant funding of $50,000 and $61,000 in donations in that $380,000. Later that, later that year, you approved a funding for $580,000. Is this project over budget? I mean, I don't know. It's really hard to tell. Let me be clear. I'm not opposed to EVs, but I do not think EV stations are necessary, a necessary expense. Let me be clear as well. I'm not opposed to playground equipment, but almost $600,000 is not a necessary expense at this time. I don't know how our priorities are being set.
Mr. Baumgarten.
Am I out of time?
Five seconds.
Sorry, just, you're good.
Okay. So let me ask a final question. Are each and every one of you, each and every one of you, prepared to make the necessary course corrections to solve the history of financial problems that we have, and they're going to get worse? And if not, why are you on the council, and why are you running for reelection if you're up for reelection? Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no one else approach the microphone for public comments, Ms. Mitchell, have you received anything to be entered into the record?
I have. On July 9th, Paul Jordan, Berkeley stated he observed about 20 bags of yard waste that had not been picked up due to lack of tags. He stated this is visual confirmation the yard waste policy changes were poorly communicated and implemented and took effect too quickly. He proposes the city temporarily resumes pickup and gives a 30-day notice. On July 15th, Paul Jordan, Berkeley suggested perhaps an announcement of the bag tag requirement could be posted on the marquee and community center sign. He noted some bags on Cattelpa had orange stickers without an explanation of why they weren't collected. He stated perhaps code enforcement could include an explanation. July 12th, State Representative Natalie Price, State Representative Regina Weiss, and State Senator Mallory McMaro expressed their support of Berkeley City Council's efforts to pass a humane pet store ordinance, which would prohibit the sale of commercially bred dogs and pet stores. They stated humane pet store laws provide essential protections to our communities while encouraging pet acquisition from ethical sources like shelters, rescues, and responsible breeders.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
One recog-
Sorry, consent. I'm back now.
One, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 39th regular city council meeting on Monday, June 19th, 2023. Two, warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1388. Three, motion number M. 4823, matter of authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Oakland County to provide animal care services for the City of Berkeley effective October 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2025. And four, motion number M. 4923, matter of approving Berkeley's official vote for a slate of candidates to serve as trustees on the Board of Trustees for the MML Workers Compensation Fund and directing the city clerk to send in the marked ballot.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin with support from Councilmember Julie. Are there any corrections or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The consent agenda has passed. Now, Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognitions, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number two?
Motion number M. 5023, matter of approving the purchase of two 2024 Ford Police Interceptor Utility All-Wheel Drive Marked Police Vehicles for $100,070, $50,035 each for the Department of Public Safety from Lughammer Ford, 1960 East Main Street, Owasso, Michigan, 48867, from the vehicles account 101-345-985-000.
Is there a motion to approve M. 5023?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Henan?
Support.
With support from Mayor Protem Gavin. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we discussed during the budget hearings, the budget for this fiscal year does include the purchase of two of the needed four police vehicles for the Department of Public Safety. So these are a budget item that are being purchased through a purchasing cooperative that we utilized out of McComb County. And Chief Kane is able to give you every other spec on these, on this item.
There's Jack when you need him.
I know. I spent the afternoon with Jack, so.
Oh, good. You're all set then.
But I can't channel him, so.
Yeah, I can't either. Good evening, everyone. I'll talk about the right item this time, unlike last time. As Mr. Baumgarten said, this is replacement of two existing marked police vehicles. We did not purchase any last year. Looking back, the last, the last model year we purchased were 2021, so our newest cars are 2021. So this is three years, model year since our last purchase. The way we replace cars is based upon not only mileage, but engine hours, service issues. You know, once in a while, you just get a car that you have a lot of issues with. So we're going to replace two of our either oldest slash most problem vehicles. As you know, our vehicles, it's not just the mileage, it's the engine hours. Our vehicles are run quite a bit. This is, I think, my sixth budget year here, and we've skipped buying cars two separate occasions. So if we get too far behind, our vehicles become out of warranty, and, and our maintenance costs end up increasing also. So these will replace two existing cars. Of course, every, every year, we look at EVs, we look at hybrids. We just don't think they're, they're, they're there yet. We have a couple departments we're looking at, a couple, quite honestly, weren't very successful. They haven't been able to get the cars in the road. So another thing, I, as a listserv I got last week, there are people that ordered cars May of last year that don't have them yet. So we will not be getting these cars, we don't think, for quite a while. We don't even know we can order them yet, but we want to be ready when we can.
Sure. Thank you.
Sure.
Any public input on this agenda item?
Actually, just a quick question. Mike Weisig, who lives in Berkeley. What is, what do we do with the old vehicles? Are those traded in? What's the value of those? And what's going to be done with that revenue?
I'm sorry about that. The vehicles are either, like, there's a couple vehicles assigned to City Hall, so they get our old ones. So if those ones are still in good condition, they'll keep those, and we will sell these. They go out to auction, and the money goes back in the general fund.
Okay. Do we know how much the value is?
Boy, I'm, I'm thinking around between $10,000 and $15,000 generally.
Excuse me, can you?
I'm sorry about that.
Say both of you into the microphone, because they're not going to be able to hear at home.
The question was, how much, how much our vehicles are worth when they go to auction? I want to say they're between about $10,000 and $15,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a reason why they go to auction?
Mike, come back.
Is there a reason they go to auction and not, like, trade in or other kind of avenue for sale to get more revenue?
I, I don't know of any, the dealers won't, I mean, we, we can't trade them in to where we get our vehicles from.
Okay.
I'm certainly open, quite honestly, DPW handles that, most of that. That's the same way their vehicles go.
Okay. Thanks.
Good.
Okay. Anyone else? A discussion from council. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Chief, for bringing this to us. And actually, both of my questions were just answered in the course of the dialogue there in terms of timing and in terms of resale. So thank you for, for what you're doing to help keep the fleet as fresh as we can. As noted by our city manager, this was just two out of the four that we would like to have purchased. So we know that there's still more need out there, and we look forward to being thoughtful around when the timing might be for those other vehicles as well, so.
Right. And I should, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, too, what a great job DPW does on our vehicles. And this is a transition year for us. Our vehicle maintenance officer retired, and their mechanic retired. So there's a lot of people doing new jobs, and they're doing a fabulous job.
Thank you. Councilmember Henan?
Yeah. So one question I hear asked often is, people see cars just sitting in the parking lot out there, the marked police vehicles. So what determines the, you know, what goes into determining how many cars we purchase?
We, we need vehicles, a couple, couple reasons for that. We need vehicles at shift change. We quite frequently have medicals at shift change. If there's no cars, the uncommon shift to take, we don't have people on the road. So those officers will go on the road. Anytime we have a fire, people respond to the station. They jump in cars to get, to get to the fires. Typically, the trucks are already there. Major events, all of the details we have, which are becoming more and more frequently, we need cars for that. And quite honestly, we have a car that's been on the dealership for three or four months now that we don't think we're going to get back for several more months. And if we have a couple of those cars, that's an issue. Our K-9 car's in the lot right now because it was in for service, and it just got back. So, and the handler's on vacation. So sometimes it looks like more cars than we actually have. Plus, there's people that could be driving them that are in the station.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on M. 5023?
Henan?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Motion number M. 5023 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M. 5123, matter of approving the mayor and city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement for a public safety school resource officer program between the City of Berkeley and the Berkeley School District.
Is there a motion to approve M. 5123?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin with support from Councilmember Julie. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For some time now, the school and the city have discussed a more formalized agreement to provide officers for, for the school district. This item comes to you today by way of the school district, who largely did thankfully allow the groundwork and research into a program that works best for both entities. This did go before the school board. It requires an approval from both the school board as well as the city council. The school board did approve and recommends approval to you guys on July 10th of 2023. As it's noted in Chief Kane's memo here, Dave Arnie, Sergeant Arnie, who's present with us this evening, will be the school resource officer should this be approved. The school district will be paying 75% of Sergeant Arnie's salary as part of this program.
Thank you. Chief?
This is a great program. I'm very happy we can do it. Obviously, in this day and age, security is very important, but it's not only the security, it's the, it's the networking, it's the bond that develops between, and Sergeant Arnie.
Come on up, Sergeant Arnie.
Okay. I don't want to forget about him. He already does a lot of this, and it'll be nice that the city can recoup some of the, the salary. I directly supervise three of the four SROs in the Fermington School District when I was there, and also supervised them up to the end of my career there. And I can't tell you how many times it's paid dividends. And this is just kind of formalizing what we're already doing. And instead of, you know, really, his job right now is detective first, SRO second, it'll be the other way around. It'll be SRO first, detective second. So he'll be assigned to the school when it's in, when it's in session, and he'll be, and obviously, he's our employee, he'll work for us. But when, when school's not in session in the summer, he'll, he'll be working for us, but also doing a lot of the training with the, the staff and working with the schools pretty much year-round.
Great. Would you like to say anything about this fabulous opportunity?
I would just like to thank the chief and the, and the department. I mean, it's, and the school district. It's, it's a great opportunity. Chief talked about safety. It's more than that. It's, it's building the bond between kids and, and the police department and, and that trust. And over the last five years that I've been visiting the schools on a regular basis, I've just, I guess, created such a good relationship with the staff, the students, and I just think it's a great program, and it's, it's going to work out great.
Well, we're happy to have you in that role. Any public comment on this agenda item? Come on up, Mr. DuRoz.
Question.
Please speak in the microphone so that everyone can hear.
Question. Is this the first school resource officer for the Berkeley Police Department? And is it the first school resource office for the Berkeley School District? Or do they have some through the other?
No, this will be the first for both.
First for both?
Yes.
Really?
Yes. But it's like, I know in Fermín Hills, we had them since the late 80s, and most school districts around us have full-time school resource officers.
Are there plans to add more? We should take one at a time?
Yeah. Sorry. At least we're doing it this time. As of right now, the plan is for one. I don't see where we need two in the Berkeley, in the Berkeley School District, but I wouldn't say no to anything in the future. But right now, this is, this is our only plan right now.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up to the microphone.
Hello, my name's Tom Stathopoulos. I live at 1919 Cattelpa. My question, sir, is, so is the officer going to be in one school, floater, or what's the lucky school?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
Talk on the mic.
Yes. I, I will have an office out of the high school. However, I will visit all the schools in the district. I have been visiting all the schools in the district now. This position will just allow me to do it more often. There's nothing set in place on what school I visit at what time. I'll keep that open, but I will be, have an office in the high school. I'll mainly work out of the high school.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, so basically, people who have the impression there's going to be a police officer in school when school's in session, that's not the correct impression, correct? You can't cover all the schools in one person. That's my comment. Thank you.
Yeah. And if I could mention, too, we already, our uniform people are at the schools at least twice a day, every day, obviously unless there's other things going on. But so we're at the schools all the time anyway, with marked cars and uniform personnel. And Sergeant Arnie will be there as part of this assignment, but our other detectives frequent the schools also, Lieutenant Hadfield and our PSO detectives also. So, and part of this is, you won't know where they're at either. They may be at the high school, they may be at the middle school, maybe at an elementary school. But our schools are visited, quite honestly, pretty much daily.
So this is just formalizing?
One position.
One position and, and in a relationship that's already been ongoing, essentially?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Exactly.
Anyone else?
Mike Weisig again from Berkeley. So this is a new position?
It is for this city, yes.
Okay. And what is, what is the time allocation annually between what, the time that'll be spent in the school district versus at the city?
Sure. The, so basically, he'll be, he'll start his day at, at our station, he'll work at the schools all day, every day, and then he'll come back and end his day at our station every day that's in session. You know, he, he may have a day or two of training or a day or two off, but the majority of his time off will be taken when school is not in session. Does that answer your question?
Kind of. Again, because obviously, a full-time employee, that's 2,080 hours a year, right? So what I'm looking at is, what is, is it truly 75% of that 2,080 hours is spent in the schools, and then the remaining 25% is the city?
I would say that's probably a pretty good estimate of that 75%, because if you look at the summer, obviously, he'll be working, his assignment will stay with the schools, but he'll be working on our cases also.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Yeah. It seems like there's probably more time that's going to be spent in the schools, probably more than 75%. That would be my guess.
I mean, I, I don't know off, off the top of my head what, how many days school's in session, but if schools-
We should probably look into that.
If school, I, I believe it's like 180, around that. Every day that school's in session, I will be there.
I mean, I think it's a great idea. I really do. I'm just looking at, you know, because now this is more added cost to the city, when obviously, we have students from Huntington Woods, Oak Park. So, I mean, have, have those cities, are they contributing to this at all?
No, they're not. And, and-
Is there a reason why?
Because it's, it's our school district. We're responsible for the school district. So these are, he, he will assist Berkeley, I'm sorry, he will assist Huntington Woods and, am I close enough to the mic?
Yep, I think so.
He will assist Huntington Woods and Oak Park, but he's responsible for the Berkeley schools, the schools that are in Berkeley. Also, for, the typical contract for SRO is anywhere from 50 to 75%. So this is actually the highest end that I've seen. I know my former department, it was 50%. The schools paid 50% of the salary.
Well, I would just, I mean, again, I think it's a, it's a great idea. It's certainly a need in the schools for it. I totally support it. My dad's a retired policeman, so I'm totally, I totally get it. I would just, I would think that maybe re, re, you know, revisit this contribution maybe from the other cities that are sending students to Berkeley High. You know, it seems like, even though it is, it's a great deal, right? 75%, 25%? But even that, I'd like to see kind of the time allocation, just to make sure that really we're paying for, you know, we're getting the 25% that we're paying for. But then also, too, I think that it's, I don't think that's, there's anything wrong with trying to get Huntington Woods or some of the other, you know, cities that send their children to Berkeley High to contribute something.
I would also like to add that, being that this is the first year of this, I'm sure we can tweak and adjust. And as we fully actualize hours and days and all of that, I think we can, moving forward, make adjustments. Councilmember Baker, did you have to?
Thank you. Just an additional clarifying question. Currently, we're paying 100% of the salary, so this is a significant savings for the city, because rather than paying 100%, we're paying the 25. And then I do believe that the other communities, Huntington Woods, Oak Park, they are paying through their, through the school districts, which encompasses those additional communities. They are, in fact, contributing to that, to that broader fashion. So at least that's how I think, how I think the numbers are working.
Maybe I misunderstood, because I asked if it was, if this is a new position. I was told yes.
Well, it's new isn't a new rule, I believe, right? But it's, he's been here for a long time and served the community incredibly well.
Essentially, we're losing an officer to the school, right? Then if it's, if we're not adding a person, we're just reallocating time?
During the school year, for sure. And he's around to help with anything, right? I'm sure you follow, so you can talk more about this.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I mean, during school hours, yes, I will be at the schools. I will, when, like I said, when school's not in session, they have a day off for, for one reason or another, I will be back in this building doing what I normally do. It's just when school's in session, I will be based out of the schools.
Okay. And again, I appreciate it. I appreciate all the info. You know, just given the financial crisis that the city's in right now, I mean, obviously, making sure that we're, we're trying to recoup costs where we can, we're trying to really make sure we're getting still the same coverage, but yet not losing any benefit to the residents. You know, it's very important to me at least. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Sergeant. So, most parents, at the end of the day, just want to know-
Excuse me, could you state your name and city of residence?
I apologize. My name is Clarence Black. I apologize. My name is Clarence Black. I'm a Berkeley resident since 2008. Most parents really want to know, in terms of safety, active shooter response. So is the SRO position going to do anything in terms of current Alice posture, creating variable threat matrices, things like that? Because again, bad people, first and foremost, like to be where you all aren't. And as the one gentleman pointed out, you know, granted, I know we do our shifts, but bad people are going to figure out where you aren't and then what's going to happen from that point. Thank you.
Yeah, again, this is a start. Right now, there's nobody in the schools. For last however long I've been here, there's been nobody in the schools. So I think me periodically visiting the schools over the last few years created such a good relationship with the schools where they want to bring me in full-time, or bring an officer in full-time. I think starting off right now, it's more than what we currently have or had in the past. So that's a good start. You talked about active shooter, Alice, so that's already been in the works. I've been trained on that. All of our officers have been trained on active shooter response. Alice, I am an Alice instructor. I work with the schools every year and go over Alice with them, Alice drills, and speak to them on Alice. So I guess if that answers your question.
Thank you. Did you have something to add, chief?
I was just, again, to reiterate, we're already doing a lot of this. It's just we're getting some of the funding back, and we're formalizing it and I think taking it to at least the next level now. I think we're really well-prepared for emergencies. But this will prepare us even more. We'll have somebody there all the time to be able to, and again, go back to my previous department, we found out about bad things that could potentially happen by people coming up and talking to our SROs because they knew them personally, they knew they could trust them. And Dave's already got that reputation, but now they don't have to find him. He'll be at one of the schools.
Right, thank you. Any discussion from council? Okay, thank you both so much. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on M 5123?
Baker?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Motion number M 5123 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R 1723, matter of considering a resolution of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, supporting a statewide prohibition on the sale of dogs and cats in pet stores.
Is there a motion to approve R 1723?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker.
Support.
With support from Councilmember Henan. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the first of two related items. The first is a resolution, of course, as the motion stated. It is in support of House Bill 4838, which is, we're currently working its way through the Michigan Legislature, which places a lot of the same protections that we've been actively looking for when it comes to the retail sale of dogs, cats, and statewide case ferrets, which has not been a big issue here. I won't read the entire resolution for you, but it's worth noting, in the final sections, it does indicate that this will be sent to 14 different offices. That includes the State House and Senate, Governor Whitman's office, the House Committee on Governmental Operations, the Speaker of the State House, state representatives, state senators, the Michigan Department of Agricultural and Rural Development Director, Dr. Tamboring, County Executive Coulter, the Oakland County Board of Commissioners, Michigan Municipal League, the Michigan Townships Association, and the Michigan Humane Society. So our advocacy on this will be really strong should council decide to support the resolution. It's worth noting too, that after the packet came out, we did receive two letters of support for this and the ordinance that's to be considered from the State Director of the Michigan Humane Society, as well as some of the elected officials that are listed in the resolution too. So this does have broad support. It's recommended by administration, and would like to see it move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Sterren, do you have anything you'd like to add? I mean, not necessary, but I just want to give you the opportunity.
No, I did assist, some in the drafting of this resolution. I didn't do the heavy lifting part, but just some fine tuning. And I think it's fine. I have nothing to add to it, and it's up to council now whether to approve or not.
Okay, thank you. Any public input on this agenda item? Please come to the microphone, state your name and city of residence.
I am Gail Sikolski. And it breaks my heart to know how many animals are in shelters dying. Some of them are healthy animals, and they're being killed because of overcrowding. And I think everything has to be done. There's no reason to buy animals in a pet store when there are thousands of little creatures that are waiting sometimes years for a forever-loving home. And the kill shelters, I can't wait to see them put out of business. And we need to adopt these animals, not shop in pet stores. They're wonderful animals, some are puppies, some are, unless you're allergic and you have to have a certain breed, then buy from a breeder. But we shouldn't be selling puppies, animals, in pet stores until our shelters are empty.
Thank you, Gail. Any discussion from council? Councilmember Henan?
I just noticed one oversight we have in here in the, our instructions on who to send it to. We've admitted Representative Weiss. So I'd like to propose that we add her to the list.
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten, do you have a note on that? I'm here for some Gavin.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, just kind of one other quick thing to note for the resolution. Kind of given that dogs and cats are in the title of the resolution, I just want to make sure for the clerk that both dogs and cats make it into the language for each whereas, you know, kind of, otherwise though, looks good to me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're good? Ms. Mitchell, oh, sorry, Councilmember Baker.
I was just going to add on, yeah, I had noted that minor omission as well and extend my full support to this. I think having our resolution in place sends that strong signal and helps encourage our leaders across the state to take these humane actions and do the right steps. I only wish we could move sooner on these kind of things to bring it to fruition more quickly. But at least this is a positive step forward, very much in support.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on R 1723?
Julie?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Resolution R 1723 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Ordinance number O 923, matter of approving the first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to add Article 5 Retail Pet Store Sales in Chapter 2 Animals of the Berkeley City Code to prohibit retail pet stores in the city from selling dogs, cats, or rabbits.
Is there a motion to approve M 3723?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Henan?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Julie. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Second of two actions that are related this evening. Not enough to advocate for action at the state level. Council has put together and discussed an ordinance specific to the local level as well, which advocates for some of the same objectives and mirrors the same timeline as we move forward here. So this would not only apply to, it would carry on the current moratorium that we have against the new opening of retail dogs and cats and rabbit stores, but also would go on to address any existing ones that may have already opened prior to the start of this ordinance here. So it does cover two different sides of things. And thank you to the city attorney, who's been fantastically patient and who's done exhaustive research on the best way to handle things and move forward. So that's what comes before you this evening. Again, supported by the Michigan Humane Society, as well as our elected officials at the state level as well.
Thank you. Mr. Sterren?
Just very briefly, what this ordinance would do is, would prohibit the retail sale of dogs and cats at pet stores in Berkeley. So it would prevent any new stores from opening, any expansion of stores for dogs and cats. Actually, I think we cover rabbits now too. We have about the rabbits for a moment. In addition, with regard to the one existing store that was lawfully open in the city, that would be phased out over a period of time that the council will need to prescribe in. But if we're, if our intention is to match what's in the State House bill, then the date of phase out would be July 1 of 2025. But it would phase out, and during that phase-out period, there are a number of conditions that have to be met. Informational conditions, reporting conditions, certification types of conditions. Those sorts of things would have to be met in order for this retail pet store to stay in business. I believe Councilmember Henan has either passed out, or I don't want to steal his thunder, about to pass out a, some supplemental information where there are just a few minor tweaks that have been added to the proposed ordinance that are in your packet. I've reviewed them. I have no problem with them. I think they're fine additions to the ordinance. So with that, it's for the council to deliberate and decide.
Thank you. Any public comment on this agenda item?
Thank you very much. Blake Goodman, Lansing, Michigan. My name is Blake Goodman. I'm the Michigan State Director for the Humane Society of the United States. And I'm here on behalf of all of our supporters across the state who ask you to please support ordinance O-09-23, the humane pet store ordinance. Selling commercially raised puppies and kittens in pet stores raises serious animal welfare and consumer protection issues. Pet store puppies are often born into cruel and unsanitary conditions, taken from their mothers at just seven or eight weeks old, and trucked to a pet store where they're put into small cages to be handled by inexperienced staff and consumers. Pet stores promise humane, regulated breeders and healthy socialized puppies, when this is rarely true. As a result, consumers often unknowingly incur the cost of caring for these sick, irresponsibly bred puppies, ending up with high veterinary bills and sometimes the heartache of their new pet dying. The pet store chain here in Berkeley unfortunately is not an exception as various online complaints and reports about the owner's other stores detail sick puppies misleading sales tactics and a lack of transparency or accountability on those fronts. There's a need for legislators at every level of government to help stop these practices. And laws like this ordinance are working. These laws have effectively shrunk demand for puppies bred in cruel conditions with public records showing that there are 32,000 fewer breeding dogs now caged in USDA licensed puppy mills than 10 years ago. The reality is that no pet store needs to sell puppies in order to be successful. The retail pet industry is worth $123 billion, with pet food, products, and services dominating. Morgan Stanley reports that this industry is poised, is quote, "poised to nearly triple", hitting $275 billion by 2030. According to Pet Business Magazine, of the top 25 pet retailers in North America, only one sells puppies. And in 2022, that chain shrunk, while competitors who don't sell puppies are growing. As the ordinance has written, this store will have plenty of time to transition over to humane products and services model, the model already followed by the vast majority of pet stores here in the state of Michigan, by prohibiting pet stores from selling dogs and cats and rabbits. Berkeley Council can protect their residents and promote responsible pet acquisition from one of the many overwhelmed shelters and rescues, thank you, or from a responsible breeder. Six states soon to be seven, and over 460 localities across the United States already prohibit the sale of commercially raised dogs and cats in pet stores, including here in Michigan, East Point, Fraser, New Baltimore, Royal Oak, Harbor Springs, St. Clair Shores, Woodhaven, and as of just a few weeks ago, the city of Ann Arbor. Thank you again for your time tonight and for considering this. Again, on behalf of the Humane Society of the United States and all of our supporters, we ask that you support passing ordinance O-09-23.
Thank you.
Charles Terrell from Berkeley. I find, I read the ordinance. I find the part about prohibiting his business, forcing changes to the business to be problematic. I can see without a whole lot of foresight, this could result in litigation. The owner is on record as saying, if I'm not grandfathered in, that I'm left alone. Litigation will result. So why do we want to open up that door to, I'll promise that he's already made, an inevitability that we can see coming down the road of litigation? Let him be. If it's such a bad thing, what he's doing, he won't be in business long. Just let it go. Take that whole part out about restructuring his business and putting him out of business by a date to be determined. Leave that piece of it out if you want to prohibit the retail sale of puppies, kitties, and rabbits. Go ahead. But the other part of it about closing down his business is just plain wrong. It will lead to consequences that have already been promised.
Tiffany Perkins, Royal Oak. I just want to thank council for learning, developing alongside us. I know there's quite a few of us in this room that have come to every single meeting. I'm trying not to get emotional, especially Councilmember Henan. Just your thoughtfulness, willing to learn more about the issues. Everybody in this room is a trailblazer. Everybody's very progressive. We don't want the status quo, and that's why we're all working so hard, city attorney, to get this in motion. I don't think it's about litigation. I think it's taking a stance and having pride for Berkeley and our beliefs and who we are. And I'm really proud of the progress that we've made, and I hope to see more. And each person in this room has contributed to that. So I just want to say thank you, and I appreciate all of your hard work that you've helped us get to this point. So thank you.
Hi, Carla Osborne, Berkeley. I do want to start by saying thank you so much for all of your hard work with this. I know that it has taken a lot of time, a lot of research, because we are different than most of the other cities who have already passed this ordinance because we do have an active business here. I do want to say that just because something is here doesn't mean that it's right, which is why this is looking at being banned statewide. And I'm looking at this ordinance as being a safety net. For some reason, things go south on the state legislature, that ours at least will stop that here for us in the city. I think it's a good compromise for, I would love to see it happen immediately, but I know that that's just not feasible and can cause a lot more issues. There are some questions that I'm going to email you guys that I have on how we're going to do the research for where the dogs are sourced from and who's going to do that and how it's going to be tracked. But I do think that it's a really good, like the good bones are there for this. So I appreciate everything you guys have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla.
Hi, I'm Courtney Wooton. I live in Berkeley. Thank you. We've been working on this for seven months. And you all have been working diligently, and that does not go unnoticed. This has been a complicated process. That is so greatly appreciated. I'd like to take a moment. We know there are a lot of people here today that support this ordinance, many whom would like an immediate ban, but as Carla said, we understand it's more complicated than that. If we can take a moment to see by show of hands how many people are here? to support you in this ordinance, compared to how many people normally attend these meetings? These people have been here almost every month for seven months, and I thank you for that. Today, I am asking you for one further change in the draft that I read in this ordinance. That one amendment is that the current proposal does not include a timeframe within the current business would need to submit their documentation. It does say that they have to have that documentation on their cages or kennels before they can be sold. So while that information is readily available in store, there is no reason to take more than a week to get that permission, that transmitted over to the city. It doesn't require any additional work on the city's part, on the business's part. They already have that information being posted on the cages. If that were to be set, right now it's an indefinite amount of time. If that were to be set at a month or two weeks, that would increase the load on our city and the amount of work needed done to manage this. Small batches on a weekly basis from a business that is regularly selling multiple dogs can be handled much more efficiently if it's done on a weekly basis so that monthly, there would be a huge load and impact on the workload needing done. It also reduces the chance of having backlog documentation, makes it easier for us to resolve issues when things start to go off track rather than waiting a month out and even longer to get them resolved. Delaying this information and responding to matters are life and death for many of the animals bred in large volume breeding facilities. If we're going to allow sales to continue without an immediate ban, timeliness of documentation will be critical to ensure the animals are safe throughout the entire pipeline. An ethical, humane business operating in our community should have no problem with transparency. Transparency builds trust with both their customer and the community. Had that been provided initially and voluntarily, we would not be in the position we are in now. I'm shocked to see that the current business owner is not present to discuss this with us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. Anyone else? Okay, discussion from council. Councilmember Henon?
Yeah, I guess we can discuss the proposed changes that I circulated to all of council earlier. And we'll just sort of start on them one by one. Added the phrase "when applicable" in two places that required paperwork that just may not exist for some animals. That's section 22103B2B or B22 for brokers. Not every broker is not always involved. And in B5, there's not always a certificate of veterinarian inspection, interstate or interestate, depending on where the animal comes from. So I guess first, are there any concerns with that? The specific deadlines, Ms. Wooton mentioned that. And I had proposed a one-month limit in 22103B and D to be filed with the clerk at the end of each month. I do think the end of each week would probably be a better timeframe for the reasons given. We can go with month as that's what I circulated and check with the clerk to make sure that won't be too much of a work, what the clerk's office preference would be so far as sorting that. And I think that would be, if this passes tonight, that would be an acceptable minor change in a second reading.
I agree.
Okay, so I'd say for now, since I circulated month, we stay with month and then check with staff on what is practical there. And also that the records be provided to the consumer, not just prior to purchase, specifically stating prior to purchase so that it's not some indefinite time after purchase so they can be making a informed decision. And then the final suggestion was in 22104 violations that each sale or offer of sale in violation of this article shall constitute a separate offense. So that it's, you know, if there are many puppies that aren't being, or animals that aren't being properly documented, then it's an offense for each. So those were the proposed changes I had. I guess we need to decide a end date as well, or a, the phase out date as well.
Okay, anyone else? So phase out date. Do you have a suggestion? I'm sorry, wait.
Yeah, I was going to suggest July 1, 2025 to mirror the current bill.
House Bill 4838?
Yes, so, you know, and that's the rationale behind that date.
Okay.
Agreed.
Makes sense.
Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a very significant item for me, and I'm 1,000% in tune with the intent of this as with the resolution before that. And absolutely agree with the direction that we're headed conceptually. To the expiration date, you know, this would give them effectively two years to continue with their current business model. And to me, as we've heard, every day matters. Every day matters to these animals, and to think two more years of this is just, it's very difficult for me. So if there was some way to help encourage them to transition their business model in a far shorter timeframe, I'd be in support of that. The two years, I understand the rationale. It certainly makes sense intellectually, but emotionally, it's very, very difficult for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Henon?
I'd like to be able to do it immediately too, but, you know, I don't want to let perfection get in the way of progress.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll on O-0923?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Baker?
No.
Duvie?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Ordinance O-0923 has passed. Ms. Mitchell, will you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Motion Number M5223, matter of approving the continuing partnership with DG Energy Company LLC, 42690 Woodward Avenue, Suite 360, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan, 48304, to provide and install one EV charger at Oxford Park at a cost not to exceed $33,335. Funds for this expenditure will come from account 101-265-971-150.
Is there a motion to approve M5223?
Some move, Your Honor.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker?
Support.
With support from Mayor Protem Gavin. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First and foremost, this agenda item comes with a public apology to the City Council, Berkeley residents, and facilities manager Alex Brown. This comes before the City Council after the start of construction due to my own mistake. While this is a budgeted item, approval to proceed with the installation of the Oxford Park EV stations should have come first before the City Council. It was my misreading of a previous council-approved agreement that brings us to this point. I mistakenly believed the council's approval for the EV charging stations at the library included authorization for an additional station and allowed Mr. Brown to proceed with the planning and installation of the Oxford Park stations. It was only after the vendor's incorrect placement of that station and questions arose from mayor and members of council that I realized my mistake. To correct this mistake, I am bringing this item before the City Council so that proper consideration can be given to the whole of the circumstances, and the City Council can decide how to proceed. Because of my incorrect authorization, the city has purchased and taken delivery of a charging station, and a significant portion of the onsite electrical work has already happened. This work occurred before June 30th and would be attributed to the previous fiscal year. Building a modern vehicle infrastructure is an important goal for the city of Berkeley. A second station was budgeted for in the previous budget year, and city staff and our EV charging committee worked hard to make it a reality. I am sincerely sorry that my mistake has brought negativity to this project, one that our community should be proud to accomplish. My actions were not done for personal benefit or with any ill intentions, but the effect is the same nonetheless. If council decides not to proceed with the project, the remainder of the unbilled labor will need to be paid. The charging unit will need to be sold, and the infrastructure will remain in place until the city can obtain grant funding to restart the installation process. If the council approves this project, the vendor will relocate the station base and electrical work to the proper location as shown on their plans included in your packet, and will install the charging unit, and the city will apply for the $4,000 rebate from DTE. Again, I sincerely apologize for my mistake, and I've put steps in place to ensure that it does not happen again.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgarten. Mr. Brown?
Good evening, everyone. Matt, thank you. As you, Matt had kind of mentioned earlier in his comments, this was part of our project that was approved last year in the fiscal budget 2223. With the successful installation at the library, we are moving forward with the next installation at one of the predetermined better spots in the city, which was Oxford Park. And due to my oversight and as Matt had said, some of his oversights, we moved forward with it kind of quickly in trying to get it done without the proper approvals. The vendors did make a mistake in their installation. Everything that was submitted to building department and to us was correct. Install team improperly installed it. Obviously, if we move forward with this, they'll be correcting it with zero additional cost to the city, and we'll be doing it within a week or so.
Thank you. Any public input on this agenda item?
Mike Weisack from Berkeley. How much would we get for the charging station if it was sold?
We're not sure yet. We'll probably get pretty close to the purchase price, we believe. I've started some conversations with both Ferndale and Masson Heights, both of which have upcoming projects, are working with the vendor. They would potentially be the purchaser, but I have not gotten a price yet.
Do we know, I mean, how much, when you say it would be pretty much the purchase price, I mean, how much of that is the $33,000?
Let me pull that up.
Purchase price for the charger is $74.50.
Yeah.
So the majority is labor, right?
Yes, the majority of this is labor. The electrical work that had to be run to the site from the station, from the transportation.
Okay. My vote would be personally to move forward with it because obviously the bulk of it is labor. You've already paid it, or you're going to have to pay it, so you might as well put it in. But I think more broadly, you know, again, I encourage City Council to look at needs versus wants. This is a want project. It's not a need project. I agree that this is where the industry is going. This is where we need to be moving towards, but under the fiscal crisis that we're under right now where there's no money, we don't need to be spending money on playgrounds. We don't need to be spending on EV stations until we can get our financial house in order. I think it's very much misguided. You know, I mean, we're losing chipper services. We're losing, you know, we're having to pay for bag tags now. I mean, these are services that apply to every resident in the community. Charging stations and playgrounds do not. So again, I think it's time to take a step back, revisit your priorities and what the needs are of the residents. And then once we get the financial house in order, absolutely, let's move forward with playgrounds. Let's move forward with these stations. Let's do all of these enhancements that would make the city of Berkeley even better. But we're not in a financial position right now to do that.
Thank you.
Hello, Tom Stephanis, Berkeley. I just want to echo my neighbor's comments. I appreciate City Manager Baumgartner's sentiments. I think he's very sincere, and I think he means to do the right thing as you all interpret it. We elect you. You carry things out. Earlier, we had a lot of eloquent arguments. I'm personally puzzled and surprised, I know we shouldn't go back to previous issue, but why it took so long for Berkeley, I saw this business open on Woodward. You're probably greater animal lovers than I am, but I wasn't thrilled. So I don't know with this push for these chargers, the taxpayer expense, it's nice to have. I don't know how much discussion you had before that about the people who have to drill or who have to mine nickel, about dealing with all the heavy metals of these heavy batteries and the wonderful toxic chemical waste that we're going to create with our electric vehicles that you are looking to perpetuate with our tax money as we pay for our yard waste and other things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg Duras again. This time I'm going to put the microphone where it serves a purpose. So it's not necessary. We find ourselves here because of a mistake, and so it was a really difficult decision. But let me give you some perspective that I'm thinking and others. We postponed the purchase of needed police cars so that we could put in electric vehicle chargers. We stopped chipper service. And now we charge for yard waste so we can put in electric vehicle stations. Basically, we're putting in something for the few and taking away things for the many. And that gets to an issue of priorities. The issue at hand here is most of the money is spent, and so there's no really solution. There's no real good solution here. But it's an excellent example of reordering priorities, and that's really the point I want to make here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Gail Sikolsky again. I live in Berkeley. I have low income. I'm disabled. I'm a senior, and I recently got a bill for $900 that because my sidewalks, three of my sidewalks are broken in the front. And I thought that years ago, the city paid a portion of that. I'm not sure. But I think those things are more important. We're not going to get electric vehicles for a long time. And I really don't know how I'm going to pay $900 to fix my sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail.
Hi, Courtney Wooton. I live in Berkeley. I did not intend to speak on this topic this evening. I know it's something that is very controversial. I just wanted to take a moment to perhaps look at the other side. The points that have been made about cost are valid. And as a society, we're not quite there yet in the EV world. But I'd like to share a little story as an EV owner that's parked right outside that door. When I travel on road trips with my EV, I don't stop at a large gas station that I can see from the highway. I wander into a small town, into the middle of their cute, adorable downtown because the EV chargers are there, just like ours at our library. I stop and I dine at the quaintest little restaurants and support individual small businesses by eating there, by shopping in their small shops. So I'm not saying that the costs aren't valid, but I'm saying that there has been a big picture overlooked. We work hard, our DDA and our community, to build a downtown that is forward-thinking and welcoming to bring business to us, which builds our property values. So I'm not wiping away the prior comments. They are valid. But I just wanted to take a moment to say there is a little bit more to it than that. Expenses aren't always that tangible. I appreciate that we're building our community, and I thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. Come on up.
Lynn McNamee, and I live in Berkeley. So I just kind of have a general question, and maybe it's because I haven't read everything. But when it comes to these types of projects, plans, what have you, I understand that it was assumed that it was part of last year's budget. So in my mind, if I had a budget last year, that's where the money sits. It's not necessarily taking away from the money this year, but it seems because of the things that we're unable to pay for this year, are those expenses. things that we're unable to pay for this year, are those expenses that are going to be incurred if we keep moving forward with the CV, are they going to come out of something that has already been set aside? Or is it something that we're going to have to carry over into this fiscal year? So that's just a general question I have on this and actually some other things in Berkeley. I find that it would be, excuse me, very, very helpful if there was possibly just a little bit more transparency on some of the details of how our money is being spent. I think that was a big issue with the millage passing or not passing, I should say. And I would just recommend to the board that if there are things you can do to kind of work on that communication, I think you'll get a lot more people behind a lot of your decisions. Thank you.
We don't go anywhere. I'm going to take this opportunity to personally invite you to our Budget Work Sessions. They happen every May. They're open meetings. We go line by line by line in the budget binder. Now, if you're a fan of a root canal, I would recommend coming to Budget Work Sessions. But on the flip side of that is I know I joke about them, but I know I'm going on the record and saying it's really my favorite part of, one of my favorite parts of what council does because it illuminates all the priorities of each department, where they put their dollars, what they're focusing on. It's everybody's wish list. They don't get everything on the wish list. But it is, it's a direction and it's how departments are moving and what they believe to be important. And so, I mean, those are open meetings. They're posted on the city website. If you subscribe to the city email, you will be informed about all those things. Our website is being updated. It's not, it's not fully finished yet. Our social media platforms, we've, I would say in the past probably two weeks, the responses have been more robust and quicker. And you can always, you can email, if you email council@berkleymich.net, you get all of us, even those not sitting here, plus the city manager. He's in on that, too. So any questions, any concerns, or you can email us individually, bdean@berkleymich.net. And I can't believe I'm saying this, but my mobile number is in my email signature and it's there because I want people to feel as though they can call me. I enjoy a conversation anytime I can meet with residents or have a conversation to further understanding and to clarify things. Maybe you're going to tell me something I wasn't aware of or that, oh, I'd never thought about that. So it's, the dialogue's always good, right? I always enjoy that. And we may not agree on everything, but sitting down and having that exchange, I think, is critically important to what all of us do up here.
And I agree with you 100%. I think, I'm glad to hear that there's a new website coming out because actually, one of the reasons I'm here, and she knows this, is I tried to email an email on the website that bounced back undeliverable. And then I, then Victoria answered me and told me about the meeting tonight. So I'm glad to hear that that's being resolved. And I also wanted to just point out, yes, I'm young enough, I work with computers all the time, I'm on the internet, I email, I'm on social media. That is not everybody in our community.
You're absolutely right.
And so I feel like there's a hole there. And those are the voters a lot of times, too.
Sure.
So if efforts could be made to have even some old school, you know, ways of communicating where things are easily found, even if it's like printing out the things that you're talking about or having it available here at the library so people can...
Community center.
Yeah, exactly. So...
And before, I want to know your wind-up. Mr. Baumgarten, the first question you asked about the allocation of funding for...
Yes.
Do you want to respond to that?
Certainly. So the services were rendered within the previous fiscal year. For us, that's prior to June 30th. So they would be billed back to that fiscal year. So they wouldn't, they wouldn't appear in this fiscal year. The work outstanding by the vendor is basically correction work, which we will not be billed for. That's the only portion of this that would happen in the current fiscal year.
And just to clarify why I made that comment, I actually understand that. I'm a business manager, but I think that there's a lot of misinformation around when we're talking about, why are we doing this when this is our current situation?
Yes.
A lot of times, that money has been earmarked already and exists. And I think sharing that a little bit more so that message gets out might be helpful in your efforts.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? You're all invited to Budget Work Sessions, FYI. Okay, discussion from council. Councilmember Henin.
Yeah. I mentioned that Budget Work Sessions also are on YouTube and it's great to watch them at two times speed. You get the same information, same information with half the pain. First one to, you know, address the city manager, you know, while these procurement policy failures are, it's a huge problem, you know, I'm glad to hear your public commitment to improve and I really look forward to improving the council and the community. You're worthy of our trust. We also have communication problems that need to be dealt with and that have been significant and I want to make sure we see improvement there going forward, too. Back to this agenda item. If we voted no and were able to, I know we don't have a firm price on the resale value of the items yet, but, you know, rather than the $33,000 plus that we have here, what would be our final figure? How much would we be able to recoup? Just a rough estimate. Do we even have that?
I would say if we can sell the charger for, I mean, it's again, it's a rough estimate for, if we can sell it for $6,000, I mean, that, I mean, we still are going to owe a significant amount in labor to the company for their install, even though it was incorrect. They did do the work up minus five feet. And we would be losing out on a $4,000 rebate from DTE as well without the installation. So total number, I mean, it would, if we recoup the $6,000 roughly, I mean, we'd be...
Would some of that labor, you know, we wouldn't have to pay since they, you know, didn't do that last five feet correctly?
I would probably direct that to the city attorney on that. We'd have to kind of look at language on that. I mean, they're willing to make it right if we proceed. I mean, again, it was just the five feet of the sidewalk, but it's obviously not right. So I don't know if we have any legal standing with that to not pay the full cost. I mean, I could discuss that with Mr. Starin or if you want us to discuss it now.
I believe it should be pursued. I do believe it should be pursued, even if it probably won't be significant because most of the 60-foot run is in, but I think it should be pursued.
Okay. I think I want to hear from other people. I'm up in the air whether we should postpone this until we have that more information or I'm leaning more towards the cost savings are so... A normal project that this was messed up like this, it would be pretty much an automatic no. But this one has a revenue component that can help pay for it over time and start covering the costs. So, and it sounds like the amount that we would get back is pretty small if we voted no. So I'm open to us, you know, tabling this until the next meeting to get more information, but I think I'm inclined towards improving it just so we can, you know, start moving forward and recouping our investment, essentially.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Oh, thanks, Your Honor. I too am grateful and appreciative to the public acknowledgement of how we got here today. I thank you both for what you said. That speaks to your professionalism and the desire to help do right for the city. So thank you both for that. I'm also in support of moving forward with this. If we were to net $2,000 out of this, there's still minus the labor costs, which could get litigious. So I just assume, you know, in this case, think to that bigger picture that was mentioned earlier about the community benefits and the brand that this helps attract, you know, additional folks to our community to spend time, spend money. We've seen testimonials from business owners up and down Coolidge that have benefited from the installation there. And I think having one in one of our, in our signature park will help attract additional visitors to the community that may want to make this their future home.
Thank you.
I would like to get some more information on numbers as well beforehand. And I do have one question. Are we locked into the location of the install? Can it be moved further down or away? Because I did look at it and it is online with the handicap spot right there, which I think will be an issue down the road.
I did speak with Teresa at Parks and Rec and she clarified that the only spot at Oxford Park that is actually handicapped is that first spot. And this will actually be sitting past the second spot, so between the third and fourth spot. There is some improper markings on the ground from previous, I think previously they had multiple spots. And I will be working with the DPW and with Parks to get those very clearly remarked and made very obvious that there's the one handicap spot, an empty spot, then there'll be the two charging areas if approved.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I mean, I certainly see the value in getting some more of that information. You know, in my day-to-day work, do EV advocacy, you know, quite literally every day, so, to the legislature. So I certainly see the overall benefit that has been mentioned and that Councilmember Baker has reiterated. So I do see the value in getting some more of that information. I'm not hard and fast one way or the other. I do see also the savings that, you know, that we realize frankly if we do look to approve. So quite frankly, either one certainly makes sense to me.
Thank you. I do have a question. How was Oxford Park chosen?
Back the winter, two winters ago, and Councilman Baker had kind of spearheaded this initiative with the EV charging. We had a committee and kind of went through the city and picked probably a dozen locations and kind of just went through and library was the obvious first one. And then with some conversations, I believe it was Councilman Baker and with Teresa at Parks, we kind of thought a park would be the next logical spot for it. And Oxford is a pretty busy park and has a lot of visitors and it kind of just made sense to go there with the least amount of infrastructure. Because JC Park was on the table as well, but there's no power there. So we'd have to have power brought in from DT, which isn't the end of the world, but this was just a little more ready-made. It was ready to go and streamlined a little bit.
If I could supplement that. During the budget discussion that was mentioned earlier, we did have a presentation that outlined all of the advantages of having this kind of service provided. And Oxford was number two on the list. So we had agreed to that and that. And then again, the point of the revenue that this will bring in, because it's not free for people to use, they will have to pay in order to charge their vehicles. And so that will help us, as was mentioned, continually recoup the minimal investment that's left to complete this project.
Councilmember Henin.
Yeah. If we were to delay this until the next meeting, is there any time limit on the DTE rebate?
I could follow up with that first thing in the morning. I don't have any information on that now. I know last time when we did the library, there was no hard timeline on it. It was more, we have it secured, so as soon as we're finished and they're up and running, that's when they'll send it out to us. So I don't think there's a deadline. I can double check, though.
So if we delay, we are likely not at risk of losing the rebate?
Yeah. I would say, yeah, it sounds, that's probably the likely outcome, yes.
Okay. So I think, you know, based on what I've heard, I think I do want to have more information. And I am going to move that we postpone this until our August 14 regular meeting.
Okay. Councilmember Baker is the original motion maker, approver?
No, I do not.
So, so mine is a...
I think his is a motion. He needs a second.
Got it.
He needs a second. Oh, second.
Okay.
Now we vote on that.
So that negates the first motion?
If this passes.
If it, yeah.
Got it. Okay. So Councilmember Henin made the motion to delay moving on this until we get more information.
What's the nature of the information?
Cost.
If we, if we decided no, what would the cost?
Okay.
What would the city recoup?
Okay.
And I think included in that would not just be a, we might be able to resell the chargers. It would be a, we have a buyer and just what they will pay.
And then we also want to understand the costs that we're going to have to pay for the labor that we've already expended.
Yes, exactly.
So we may end up losing if we don't do this. Got it.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Henin?
Yes.
Baker?
No.
Dooley?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. So M5223 has passed.
Postponed.
Postponed.
I'm postponed, yeah.
I didn't give myself that option. Ms. Mitchell, where do we begin?
Councilmember Baker.
Hooray. Well, hello, everybody. Hopefully, you all had a safe, fun Fourth of July holiday weekend. Our Downtown Development Authority, DDA Board, met on Wednesday, July 12. And I would certainly like to congratulate and thank all of the volunteers, organizers, participants, vendors, and patrons of the Berkeley Pride Block Party, which was on June 25th. That was fantastic. And also, hooray to the three organizations, the DDA, the City of Berkeley, and our school district for their terrific partnership in the Art Space Plaza grand opening, which is on Coolidge, just south of Catalpa. And that was just ahead of the monsoon, I mean, the Berkeley Street Art Fest last Saturday. The Berkeley Outdoor Social Scene, or the BOSS, again, was approved by the state at the city level. So now we're working or waiting for the participating restaurants who would like to be able to partake in that, to get their paperwork and clearance. So that'll be fun. And then, of course, appropriate signage and things will be placed so folks understand where the social district begins and ends and what the rules of the road are and all that stuff works. So that's fantastic. In the downtown improvement perspective, the Bombshell Treat Bar is a new business coming at Coolidge and Dorothea, and that's where the former Sugar Kisses and the Pagan Dots used to be. They have, they've received a facade grant, so the DDA helps fund a portion, up to a portion of their facade improvements if it meets certain criteria. And they did that and we're excited to see that investment. As a friendly reminder, the downtown Berkeley Farmers Market is every Thursday from 9:00 AM until 3:00 PM. And that's from June until October 26th. That's on 12 Mile and Rubina on the south side of 12 Mile. And for more information on the downtown, you can visit downtownberkeley.com. The preceding night, the Historical Committee met in that very same room on Tuesday, July 11th. They are now available, these custom home plaques that designate the year in which your home was built. Because as a, as a community, we are celebrating our 100th anniversary as a village and we thought that'd be super cool if someone had a historic home, just come into the museum during the hours, which I'll mention in a moment. And you can fill a little form and order a little custom plaque for your home to mount if those have that, you know, that would be fantastic. And then the notion of kit homes is a very popular topic here. If you're not familiar exactly with what that means, it's basically back in the, back in the day, you could open up like a Sears Roebuck's catalog and actually buy a house. You pick this one in the catalog, you order it, and then, you know, the truck or the train comes and delivers all the stuff and you can, and you can get all your buddies together and build your house. Berkeley has many of those. We're one of the most dense kit home communities in the region. And coming up this fall will be a tour of many of those homes. The homeowners have agreed to open up their homes and answer questions and show you around. And many of the blueprints and photos of those kit homes are available in the museum. The tour will be on September 30th from 11:00 AM until 5:00 PM. And we'll be communicating more information as we get a little closer in terms of tickets and timing and all that kind of fun stuff. It'll be, if you're familiar with the golf expression of a shotgun start, we'll all meet at the, at the museum first and then folks will get assigned different houses so that we don't all go to the same house and flood them. We'll kind of spread us around and make everybody able to move around. And then looking a little bit further into the future, which is funny because I'm talking about Historical Committee here, we're, and again, with the celebration of the 100th anniversary, targeting October 14th with a historic marker outside of the museum. And that's also when we will plant the time capsule. So we chose October 14th because that was a Saturday and it's the Saturday closest to October 8th. October 8th, back in 1923, was the first day that the village officially conducted business. So that's as close to the actual date and still making it convenient for folks who would like to come and celebrate with us there. Visitors are always welcome at the museum. As mentioned, the museum is open on Wednesdays from 10:00 in the morning till 1:00 in the afternoon, 10 to 1:00 on Wednesdays, and on Sundays from 2:00 until 4:00. And their website is berkeleyhistory.com. And finally, it was Ann Hood who once said, "I have learned that there is more power in a good, strong hug than in a thousand meaningful words." "I have learned that there is more power in a good, strong hug than in a thousand meaningful words." And that's really cool because today is Global Hug Your Kids Day. And so for those of you watching at home, you have plenty of time. And for those of us here, you know, you still, you know, get home safely and do what you can do to hug your kids or someone else that you love. Global Hug Your Kids Day is celebrated on the third Monday of every July, which is the 17th this time. And it celebrates the bond between parents and children and all those good things that you get from a good hug. You know, I like to close my comments with encouraging folks to hug somebody because either you need it or they need it or both. And now with today being Global Hug Your Kids Day, I couldn't help but close with that this evening. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Stay safe.
Councilmember Henin.
Yeah. First, I want to share my own EV charger anecdote. I can, I live within sight distance of the ones at the library. And honestly, to my surprise, once they started being charged, they're still being used and people paying for them, even as our businesses are closed and after hours. But also during business hours, not necessarily when the library is open. I was able to catch one of the, a couple that were just getting into the car and asked them, and, you know, why are you here? Well, we live in Royal Oak, but, you know, I live in an apartment, doesn't have EV infrastructure. I have to charge at work. But now this is so much more convenient. I can charge here. It's like, well, do you spend more time in our downtown? Yes, absolutely. I, you know, will come down here and now I go to the gym here. And we go to the restaurants here and the little shops, places we never would have gone before. So it's a, it's one data point, but it's a validation of my original intention in approving those at the library as an economic development tool for our downtown. Now, the Tree Board, they have the summer off and they meet next in September, but they haven't been idle. The Chair, Kathy Carlos, along with some other members, have been working with the Berkeley Area Slow Roll Group to prepare three tours to see some of our diverse tree species in the city. So the Slow Roll Group is, that meets on Mondays and they take leisurely bike rides around the city. And it's for riders of all ages and all abilities. The three specific tree tours that they're looking at are on Monday, July 24th, Monday, July 31st, and then Monday, August 7th, all starting at 6:00 p.m. at the library and expected to last about an hour. And each one of the tour is taking a different route to look at different tree species that we have throughout the city. The Zoning Board of Appeals met. When we have murals that aren't in the DDA, they go to the ZDA for approval. And we had such one request for the one on the Butter Marijuana Dispensary on 11 between Berkeley and Henley, and that was approved. And then they'll be meeting again on August 15th to be considering a dimensional variance for a lot split. I'll be holding my next Talk With Dennis event tomorrow, Tuesday, the 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the library. Just come by at any time, ask any questions or share any concerns that you have. And then I have one question for the city manager when it gets around to his communication. I'd just like to hear an update on, I know we're preparing flyers to go to every residence in the house with information on the yard waste program. And I'd just like a progress update on where we are on those being delivered. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Julie.
I'm not allowed to report. The Library Board meets Wednesday, this Wednesday, the 19th, at 7:00, which is open for everybody, so I'll have plenty to talk about next month. That's it. I do have one, if I may, from Councilman Patterson on the Planning Commission. They did not meet last week or last month. Their next meeting is the 25th at 7:00, right here in Chambers. Thank you all. Have a great week.
Thank you. Mayor Proton, Gavin.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a really brief report, more just updates about next meetings. The Environmental Advisory Committee will meet August 15th at 6:30 at Public Safety. And the next meeting of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board is August 10th at 7:00 a.m. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten.
Another prepared statement. With changes in services that came with this new budget year, we have also been in major need for communicating these changes. In this time, city administration finds itself without dedicated staff member needed to meet this need. And I'd like to acknowledge that we have struggled to meet the demands of the residents and the, despite having great staff and a, and a great partner in an outside firm that we've been utilizing. We are working to close the gap between expectations and reality and get our communications to stand out from the fire hose of information that is aimed at all of us in our daily lives. We are trying to be creative in our communications and rely on more than just social media and email, an example of which I brought with me this evening. This postcard was delivered to the post office. I appreciate the queue up. This post office, or this postcard was delivered to the post office today. You'll see it's quite a bit larger than you typically find and it's, we're hoping it makes it that much easier to ignore and put in the trash. But it does give great information on the yard waste tags, the need for them. What, it also addresses chipper service and some of the changes just in general to our leafside curb collection program as well. So really took the opportunity to put as much information as possible. I've yet to see it land in my mailbox unless it came today, but we did deliver it to the post office on Tuesday. So it should be, we were expecting it over the weekend, but having not yet seen it, I would like to see it, I'm hoping today, tomorrow, it starts to reach people. But it is yet another way that we're trying to get beyond just social media and email. Those have been fantastic tools for us. We've got, we've, sales for yard waste tags have been very high. Again, I'd like to publicly thank Durst Lumber. They probably sold 6,000 tags at their location. On a near daily basis, they're coming to buy new whole rolls. So I'm really appreciative that they've made themselves available to the community in addition to all the places, all the city facilities where you can also buy these. But that, what that also comes, almost any street you drive up and down, you can see there are uncollected yard waste tags that have not yet received a tag. So we know that there is a gap there that we absolutely plan to close. We are better utilizing the outside firm and staff is really stepping up in the absence of a Director of Communications position. We hope to fill that spot, but have struggled to do so over the last couple of months here. So I did want to offer that update as my update this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney.
Excuse me. No new information report to council tonight, but I do just want to say it's nice to be back after missing your last two meetings while on medical leave. It's good to see and be seen again.
Yes, we're happy to have you back.
Glad you're back.
Yes. I just have a few updates. I want to thank the chamber for putting on another successful chalk art fest, even though the weather didn't cooperate. And I was thinking about this because every year it's bright and sunny and beautiful and no rain, except for this year. So better, better days ahead. Fingers crossed for next year. Along with, on Saturday with the chalk art fest was the Art Space dedication. And I remember initial discussions about this project between the city, the DDA, and the district. And this was delayed. The project was delayed due to the pandemic. So it was nice to see it finally come to fruition. It fulfills a DDA master plan recommendation that calls for more gathering spaces in our downtown. And I think the location of this not only benefits the high school, but all the places on Coolidge, people will be able to gather and visit and grab something to eat and hang out there if they would like. But I think what's really special about the plaza is that it's filled with artwork from current and past Berkeley High School students. And the bronze statue is by artist Austin Brantley, who is a Berkeley High School grad. So it just, I think, makes it even more special. JC Park is open and ready for play as, if you've gone by there, you've seen that. A lot of kids are enjoying it. And I'm grateful to Director McGarleton and her staff for their successful crowdfunding efforts to replace park equipment that was so outdated it would not have passed today's safety standards. So I'm happy to have new, safe equipment that allows children of all ages and abilities to play. And I would rather see that than yellow caution tape wrapped around our parks. So thank you, Director McGarleton and your staff. And that's all I have. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion may be by Councilmember Henin? With support from Councilmember Julie. The Monday, July 17th, meeting of the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley is adjourned. Oh, geez. You want to, you want to take a vote?
Sure, Julie.
Go ahead.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Baker?
Okay.
Dean?
Yes. Adjourned.